And good morning to our online girls. Thank you for joining us for Taking Back Your Life Bible Study. If you will forgive us, you probably already hear sniffling. And we've been wiping tears this morning in just this short 30 minutes. We have already met with the Lord. And we have prayed for you, and we hope you feel connected to our class as well. So, girls, welcome our online girls today. We have so much to get to. If you are joining us for the first time today, I'm Debbie Stewart, Women's Minister at Green Acres Baptist Church in Tyler, Texas. And we've had women joining us from all across America and in 21 countries. So today, we are in week three of a very important Bible study called Taking Back Your Life. It's a 40-day journey to thinking right so that you can live right. So we're going to reinforce the principles that we have talked about these last three weeks. So if you're just now joining us, you are not lost in the process. We're going to bring you right up to date. You have a handout, thank you, ma'am. You have a handout online. We posted that this morning. You can find it on our website in Girls in Class. If you'll pull that out, please. So over the last few weeks, what we have learned, and what we are not only learning in our brains, but remember, we're implementing in our body. Like what's going on in here, what goes, what takes place in here is not going to stay here. It's going to affect everything else that we do. It's going to affect our decisions, our conversations, our attitudes, our practices. That is one of the ways that we can take back things that have been lost. We can think right. For so many years, we've gotten into habits and patterns of thinking that we don't even realize are wrong. So over the last three weeks, we've done a Bible study. If you go back online and watch all three of these, today, we're going to talk about number four. So to reinforce, girls in this class and online hopefully too, I know you have this memorized by this point. This comes second nature to give. You can just roll it off your head. I know. So there's what we are doing. Everybody say yes?
Yes.
This is what we are doing. We are taking back things, and we are thinking right. That's what we're doing. That's the application of this study. Now, again, that's what we are doing, but we have to figure out how we're going to do that. Like it's a wonderful thing to just go, you know, I'm going to Bible study. We're just learning to take back things and think right. That's what we're doing. Well, how are you going to do that? That will not happen by osmosis. And I assure you that enemy will fight you every step of the way to be sure you do not accomplish this. So we have written, and we have come up with our steps, practical steps, daily processes that you can do this. What we're doing, and now we're going to do it. Number one, we're going to fix our focus. Number two, we're going to strip off sin and weight. Number three, we're going to follow directions. And number four, and this is on your handout, I've got this down, we are going to read and speak Scriptures. We're going to read and speak Scriptures on a consistent basis, on regular activities of our day. This is now going to be a part of it. If you're going to eat food, you are going to have to have read Scripture at some point that day. If we are, it's going to be like breathing. If this is what we do, whatever, we do our hair, we brush our teeth, this is going to be a part of what we do every day. I'm about to show you through God's Word how that in itself will change forever later on. Now, I'm not saying it's going to change your circumstances. I'm not saying, oh, you start reading the Bible every day, then your marriage is going to be wonderful. I'm not promising that. And I'm not saying everything, if you don't like, is going to change. Would you please point to the thing that will change if you read and speak Scripture every day? You know what's going to change? This is going to change. And this is what he's going for. This is what he's going for. So reading and speaking Scripture every day is a big part of taking back our life and thinking correctly. When you do that, you're letting God's Word, you're letting God speak over you before anybody else has the chance to do that. And may or may not be your husband, y'all may have had some conversations already, but certainly before you leave the house, and people at your work, or people in the world, and most definitely the enemy that opposes every spiritual progress you're trying to make, he's going to speak some things into your life as well. He, it's nonstop on his part. It is nonstop. But as you read God's Word in the morning, as you speak God's Word back maybe to Him in prayer or to other people, the Bible says in Psalm 119 that it is like a shield. It's like a shield to you, that the enemy, arrows, they do not get through to your heart, they do not get through to your mind. It is a shield. And maybe that's all the energy that you have right now, is just to hold up your shield. And I remember those days clearly, and I had a lot of those, when I sat on the edge of my bed, and I had to talk myself into put your feet on the floor. Put your feet on the floor. Get up. I know what those days are like, to feel like physically speaking, I cannot get these And when you're reading Scripture, and when you're taking that in, if it's all that you can do is just create a shield about you, I love that chorus that he was saying, that he is the shield about you, and you know what else he goes on to say? He is the lifter of your hand. I love that. Because about the time you get up and finally get your feet on the floor, you really don't have the energy to even lift your head. Things have happened, you're ashamed, you have regrets, you have pain, all of those things. God's Word will begin to change that in your life. Ask me how I know. I assure you, I would have killed somebody by this point, okay? Hurt somebody, really bad. Just probably myself, probably my own self, trying to get out from under some of these difficulties. But listen, that's going to inquire, that's going to require, as we're reading God's Word, that's going to require that we improve our listening and our learning skills. We're going to improve that. Do you know that statistics show, on average, now, we're talking average person, average book, so to speak, on average, a person can read six pages in five minutes. You can read six pages in five minutes. So I need us not to say anymore that we don't have time to sit down with the Lord, that we don't have time to read God's Word. You know, my challenge has been, always will be, 20 minutes a day for the rest of your life. That you'll spend 20 minutes a day. But if we can start with five, you can read six pages. Just reading Scripture would be a great part to read in Psalms this last summer, I guess, maybe it was last summer, I think, Donna, you helped us with this. We studied through Psalm 119. Not even the whole thing, but we just walked through and read the principles from Psalm 119. If you're not sure where to start, start there. And just record. I did this years ago, just made a little record as I was reading Psalm 119, of things that were important for me to know about God's Word. And I just listed it like this, what will God's Word do? So if we've got five minutes that you can sit down and read about six pages, here's what God's Word will do according to Psalm 119. Verse 105 says, His word is a lamp unto my feet and a light unto my path. The unfolding of your word gives light. It gives understanding to the simple. Teaching and opening God's Word, that's verse 1/3. I lie in the dust, completely discouraged, but you revive my heart with your word. Verse 24. I weep with grief, but your word encourages me. Verse 28. You give me life through your word. My only hope is in your word. It comforts me in all my troubles. Your word has been the music of my life. It is more valuable to me than millions in gold and silver. For I have put my hope in your word. It is trustworthy, and it protects me. Forever, O Lord, your word stands firm in heaven, and you watch over to perform it. It sustains me with joy. I wouldn't have died in my misery without your word. You have used it to restore my joy and my health. It makes me wiser than my enemies, and it is my constant guide. I keep it, it keeps me from lying to myself. It comforts me in times of trouble. Your word is my refuge, my shield, my only source of hope. And I could go on and on. I've got two more pages of what God's Word will do if you will read it, if you will speak it, if you'll begin to share, if you'll listen and repeat it. Listen to what God is saying to you that morning, and then repeat it. Repeat it to yourself, and repeat it to someone else. Now, listen, you have to be careful about repeating it to Siri, okay? Because I tried doing that in front of Tommy. As I was trying to get her to remind me of a Scripture, and so at a certain time of day, like every day at 2:13, she sends me a reminder of Philippians 2:13. But as I was trying to get her to remind me of Scripture all day long, that just did not work because she's not saying. That's probably why. Here's a few, here's a few of her listening skills that have not, that have not been very sharp in my case with her. So I would be driving along, this happened, these things happened recently. I'm driving along, and so I tell Siri to send a message to somebody. So I asked her, and a friend of mine had a baby, so I asked her, Siri, text so-and-so. And I said to her, I hope that you were enjoying your new addition. And I think that Siri, no, I think this is so weird, I cannot create this, but I really think things are connected. You know, the whole Big Brother thing, and I think she reads through the narrative of other things in my life and on my phone. So she didn't send my friend the message that said, I hope you are enjoying your new addition. She said, I hope you're enjoying your new addiction. This is my friend at Green Acres. I texted her, we've been back and forth, and so we were getting to meet a person. So I asked Siri, text so-and-so, I look forward to meeting you in person. And texted her, I look forward to meeting you in prison. Here's my all-time favorite, all-time favorite that Siri has done. This proves she's not a Christian. And this, I've asked her, do you know the Lord? And she has said, that is a spiritual question for a spiritual advisor. Well, you happen to be in the car with one. I mean, we have been done with that before. I'm going to get her saved, so bad. But here's my all-time favorite, because one of my all-time favorite verses is Hosea 2:15. He will turn the valley of trouble. Y'all heard me say it, you probably memorized it by this point. Why? Because I keep speaking it into your life. I keep speaking it over you. He will turn the valley of trouble into a gateway of glory. It's my favorite. But she sent my friend, he will turn the valley of trouble to a gateway of glory. This is why listening and hearing what was said to you is so important. So that's why the Lord has some things to say to you. Joke this Scripture down, we don't have time to turn there, but it's Hebrews 5:11. And I want to read it to you from the Message. Hebrews 5:11 says this, I have a lot more to say about this. Now, this is, this was talking about, about your spiritual growth, about moving from milk to the meat of the word. It said, I have so much more to say to you about this, but it is hard to get it across to you since you picked up the bad habit of not listening. I have a lot more to say about this, but it has been hard to get it across to you since you have picked up the bad habit of not listening. Do you see the progression in what we're trying to set up in our lives so we can take things back? There is a strategic progression here. We didn't start with me telling you, okay, we need to read and speak Scripture every day. That's not where we started. There were some other things we needed to get changed, there were some other habits we needed to implement to set the pillar, to set the foundation so that we could grow this baby right here. This is really the one we're going for, but sometimes you have to move some things out, make some adjustments. So that one has room. Make room in your life. You know, the Bible says right here in Deuteronomy, wise men still seek him. And from the beginning of time, when Mary and Joseph went to Bethlehem for baby Jesus to be born, from the beginning of time, what did we tell Jesus? We have no room. They kept going from place to place. Who can take me in? Who can I stay here? Can I be with you? Everybody said, we have no room. And we are very much like the gamekeeper today, deciding if we have room for him. If we have room for him, are we saying we don't have five minutes to read six pages of Scripture? So as we figure out how we're going to do that, and how we're going to help others do that, I'd love to see this begin to be a generational thing that we build in our generation, in my family history. That's not what was built into me. Craziness was built into me. But I want to build something different into the people coming behind me. In order to do that, I'm going to have to have some processes and procedures in place. And we're going to have to develop some spiritual patterns, and those are going to have to be part of your life. And y'all, this is the thing that we're going to stir you up so much about today, is that verse 10. We're going to have to develop spiritual patterns, behaviors, habits in our life. I think this is where we lack. I think this might be the area that is out of lack in our life. Things happen, and things got out of balance in our life, and we've got to get back to spiritual patterns, biblical patterns. If you see on my calendar, you can go to my office right now, I'd still like to have a hard copy of a calendar, like to see things, and you'll see on the corner of every month, biblical patterns, Debbie, biblical patterns. And it's not like, oh, let me develop this biblical pattern today. Okay, check that off my list. It's not how that works. You build it every day. I want you to think about companies made that you have worked for, businesses that you have been employed by. When you first came to work there, just as they did for me, they gave me a big manual. What was that called? Or processes and procedures manual. That's what it, to let you know, here are the processes of the place that you down were. Here's some processes, and here's the procedure manual. So if you come across a certain deal, this is how you need to react. Let me answer your question. Why do companies, all companies, why do we have process and procedure manuals? What are they used for? Why do we do it? Everybody's on the same page to know how to react in a situation. What to do with a problem, a technical failure, some unexplained difficulty, all right?
Supporting you.
Support you, absolutely. Educate you, teach you some skills. Set expectations. These things are going to be done at this company, and whatever. These things are not right. What was going to happen if you don't? And then these things are not acceptable at this company. I did a quick little rundown, and here's why process and procedure manuals are in play for companies. Here's why they have them. For the bottom line, the bottom line for about six reasons is two words. I love that. I love it. And y'all know me, y'all know we'll flip all this to the spiritual side of things. So think of this spiritually biblical pattern. The reason companies have process and procedure manuals is for operational success. That's why I did operational success. It is for training and understanding what to do, why to do it, and your part and how it connects with others. For overall system success. Now, we've talked about overall system success. It explains incorrect operations and actions that are needed. We're doing that today, explaining the correct operation and actions that are needed. It helps our people know what is acceptable behavior. It minimizes risk. Many departments at companies have what's called risk management department. And this is my favorite, and this is one we're going to flip to the spiritual side today. It develops internal control systems. Processes and procedures will develop an internal control system, and this is the main one. If you have your workbook, following along your workbook, turn to page 44. Page 44, Levi Lusko makes an important statement. I think it goes right along with our processes and procedures, how we want to develop an internal, an internal control system for success. This is what the enemy has to say about that verse, not verse, but page 44, the third paragraph. That day, Levi Lusko talks about bread and circuses. Do you remember that day? He's basically saying that the enemy does something, a technique called bread and circuses. And he says this, Satan's strategy is similar to what the Romans did in Jesus's time to control the citizens of their empire. So this was their internal operation. You might call it the strategy of bread and circuses. Basically, the Roman emperors found that as long as they kept their people fed and entertained, they didn't complain too much about the fact that they were stealing their freedom. Third paragraph, the devil is all about bread and circuses. He wants you to give up what Christ died for you to have. The enemy wants you to give up or give up on what Christ died for you to have. Died for you to have victory, died for you to be set free, died for you to have a relationship with him, to glorify him. And then he goes on to say this statement, he knows that if he can distract you, he can destroy you by method of distraction. But, but if you have some internal control systems, but if you have some processes and procedures, some biblical habits, some spiritual processes in place, you'll recognize that a mile away. He'll come with the same thing he's been coming at you for years, and you're like, really? Really? No, really? Like, I saw that a mile away? And he's like, he'll come up with something new, but he will no longer be able to distract you and to detour you with previous things that he has used in the past. If you'll grab your handout, I want to go to 2 Timothy in chapter 3, verse 16. Really, that whole paragraph, and the rest of that passage is so helpful to you. This is what 2 Timothy 3:16 and 17 said. I'm going to read from the New Living Translation, and then I'm giving you several other translations on your handout. The Bible says that all Scripture is inspired by God, and it is useful to teach us what is true, to make us realize what is wrong in our lives. It straightens us out, and it teaches us what, teaches us to do what is right. It's God's way, I love this, my favorite part of Scripture. It's God's way of preparing us in every way, fully equipped, for every good thing God wants us to do. And so many times when I meet with women, and I think it's my own self often, try to figure, what is God doing? Why is he doing this? What is going on? Here's what's going on, Debbie. He is preparing you in every way to be fully equipped for every good thing that God wants to do in your life. That's what it's about. It's not about your personal desires, it's not about your personal preferences, it's not about your personal perspective in life. It's about God training you and teaching you, don't do this, but do this. And we talked earlier, just writing out of Psalms 1:19, what is it that God, God's Word will do for us? Why spend five minutes? This is just one verse. It's useful to teach you what is true, to make you realize what is wrong in our lives. It straightens us out, that's my favorite. It teaches us to do what is right. I've also listed several other translations. The Message says it like this, and I want you to underline this, y'all know I see things kind of in columns and lists, I'm a list maker. So to me, when I read Scripture, it always comes out in lists. So see if you can make a list from the Message paraphrase, it's not a translation, of 2 Timothy 3:16. But see how many you can number out of this verse. The Message says, every part of Scripture is God-breathed and is useful, one way or another, showing us truth, exposing our rebellion, correcting our mistakes, training us to live God's way through the Word. That's why we're talking today, why it's so important to read it and speak it, because through it, we are put together and shaped up for the task that God has for us. I've got a list of about six things right out of that Scripture in one verse, one or two verses, that God is going to do. These, this is a list of biblical patterns, of spiritual processes and procedures that we need to be developing in our life every day. And then sharing those with someone else, every opportunity. Repeat them to yourself, teach them to your grandkids, but in every opportunity you have, which today we have time. You can text it to somebody, put it in a group text, hey, here's a thought, put it on Facebook. Yeah, let's do that. This is what the Lord said to me this morning, put that verse on there. There's so much stuff on Facebook that is discouraging, that's not even true. I see pictures of people I know, I'm like, really? You trying to pull that off? I know, but I know what's going on in your house. I'm like, that's not it. And we're just trying to look the best that we can, encourage the whole world. I like to call that shine online. Don't whine online. Shine online. Put some good stuff out there. Put God's Word. Who knows who will read that? I've had so many people respond to just Scripture, this is something the Lord encouraged me with today. I hope it will encourage you. Speak it out. Read it, and then you'll have it to speak out. This happened not long ago, I had a girl in the office, and this is, this is a value of mine, because it has changed my life. It has, it has caused me to fall in love with the Lord through His Word and through communicating like that. And so one of my values is reading Scripture and Bible study. That's why we always have Bible study techniques, and we have a Bible study workshop. All of us have a Bible study handbook available to you. But I had two girls come in my office, and one of them was a friend of the other one. She, the friend of mine brought her friend in and wanted to kind of run this idea by me about kind of this craft thing that she wanted to do online, and see what I thought how women might would respond to. So she was kind of giving me really a business plan of what she thought she would do online. And we talked for about 30 minutes, and all about this thing. We weren't talking about Bible study, we're talking about the things of God in the moment. She just had this plan, idea she wanted to run by me. So she got finished, we talked about it, and I said, now, before you leave, can I just, can I just tell you this one thing? And I went to my desk and grabbed my Bible off my desk to bring it back, and my host friend said, told you. I said, what does that mean, told you? She said, I told her, it doesn't matter what you go in here and talk to Debbie Stewart about, you will not leave until she grabs her Bible off the table and says, can I just tell you this one thing? Can I just share, can I just read you this one thing? And of course, that verse didn't have anything to do with the craft idea that she had, but here's what it had to do with. It had very much to do with something else going on in her life that she didn't come in and talk to me about. But the Lord knew. And lo and behold, that just didn't happen to be the verse that I had read this morning that I was trying to practice, that I was trying to memorize, and I just wanted to speak it into your life. And if we can do that with others, that we just use God's Word when we have questions, let's see if we can find the answer in God's Word. Let's see what God has to say about it. Five minutes, you can get through six pages, generally speaking, of God's Word. The enemy, so we know the opposite is also true. So if God's Word wants to show us the truth and expose rebellion, what are some things that the enemy wants to do? What would be the opposite? What's the opposite of showing us the truth? What is the thing the enemy wants to do?
Lie to us.
Tell us some lies. You can, you can know that he is directly opposing anything God's Word says. So just flip it to the opposite side. So he's going to show us some lies, he's going to show us some distractions, as we learned this week. The thing that the Bible says is he wants to expose our rebellion. I love, I love it. When you are packed out, I hope you'll do that. Look at this in several different translations. It's really the Lord saying, Debbie, or this is what it looks like in my life. Debbie, this attitude that you have developed, either about this person or about this thing or just things, this little attitude, and I can't remember, like, I had a twinge of an attitude, you know what I'm saying? Like in Chick-fil-A, I was hungry, I was hangry in the moment, and I had an attitude about this long line wrapped all the way around, but they were so good back. And I just had, and I'm like, you're, that? Yes, that needs to change. I wasted time. I could have spent time speaking the Word, listening to anything else, but I'm like, what? And because I'm evaluating everybody else. This lady over here is not following through, you know what I mean? And then I want to think, you've been in this line, wrapped around this building 16 times, could you not have your credit card out when you get to the gas station? Like, what if they saw what anybody? So that's what I'm going to do. Your little twinge of stuff, that's going to change. So, but here's what the enemy does. So that's what the Lord, so y'all don't assume, I was behind y'all. I was the one going. Was that you? That was probably me. I gave my chick a lay. Okay, so, so what the, what the Lord does, and what God's Word does, is he exposes those things to make us more equipped and prepared for every good work like the rest of the Scripture said. Here's what the enemy does. He affirms your feelings. He affirms your hurt feelings. That's what he does. Are you not sick of her doing this? Here she is, you have every right, you need to take that. He affirms those emotions that are trying to drive us, that we have every right to be angry, or every right to not forgive, or to share that hurt feeling with someone else. Number three on the Message, or at least the list that I made, maybe you have a different list, but it says, he corrects our mistakes. Here's what the enemy likes to do. Girl, you're fine. Hey, it's all good. You're good, you're okay. You're good, you don't need anything about that. Listen, it's way like this, it is what it is. And he tries to get us not to address some areas of mistake, or to go back and say to someone, I made a mistake. I am so sorry. Will you forgive me? I did not think that through. I popped off my mouth.[1758.82] I had a, 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 a little attitude. I didn't think it, whatever." The enemy wants to go, "How do you all need to do anything about that?" My number four in the Message was training us to live Godly lives. Here's what the enemy does. Would like to train us to live our own way. You do what you want to do. We can want to do it with the people you want to do it with. Hey, and here's what we've learned these days, and hey, if you don't want to do that, you don't have to. Do what feels good, you are the captain of your own ship. You don't have to be told what to do. I've mentioned to you before that that was one of the greatest lies that took our son out from the enemy. One of the greatest lies that the enemy told our son. Now, he is responsible for the choices, I'm not blaming this all on the enemy, but one of the things that he bore him out with was his freedom. That he would continue to tell you, "Listen, you don't have to follow their rules. You don't have to do their thing. You don't have to go to church, you can do what you want. You're your own man, you are eighteen years old, you are grown, dude. Get a life." Over and over, the enemy would just wear him out. "You need to be free of this. You need to, you need to cut your ties from these people. Go do your life the way you want to. You, you're your own man. You need to be free. Get your freedom, get out." And when he did, it cost him every ounce of freedom he ever had. He couldn't even choose when to go to the bathroom. He lost everything that the enemy promised him he would get. He just did it a certain way. This is how the Word works in our life, and this is how the enemy works in our life. It's our habits, our patterns. I've met with a lot of women, I've been one of these for a number of years. I developed a pattern of letting my feelings drive my decisions, of letting my emotions be in the driver's seat of where my life was going to go. And listen, that was a dysfunctional habit. That is a, that is not a biblical pattern. It's a dysfunctional habit that will keep you from experiencing the destiny that God has for you. It's going to keep you stuck, it's going to keep you turning your wheels in the mud. You are going to be driven by your emotions, and driven by your feelings of what you like and what you don't like, and what you can explain and not explain, what's happening in their life, but not happening in your life. It's going to take you down an unhealthy road. I know this, I did this. It's dysfunctional patterns that we want to get rid of. That's why we've set up some biblical patterns that we've been working on every week. There's one more scripture on your handout, Romans 12, 11 and 12. NIV says this. "You will never be lacking in zeal, but keep your spiritual fervor, serving the Lord." And here it is, I hear, here's the, here's the how. Here's, we need to have a whole list of hows. But here's the how right out of scriptures. "That you will be joyful in hope, you will be patient in affliction, and you will be faithful in prayer." There's my list again. Number one, joyful in hope. Number two, patient in affliction. Number three, faithful in prayer. You should define those words, look them up in the biblical meaning, look them up in Webster. You might be surprised at what affliction is, and what being patient, the real definition of that is. So through our process, we have one more week together, we'll meet tonight. So if you know anyone that would be in it, I'd love it if you come tonight at 6:30. We have, you're going to love number five. Now, I'm going to go, if we had to choose one, I'm going with number four. That's the one, that is the one. But you're going to love number five next week. But as we close and we move forward from making steps forward, from like believing, like hearing these things, and believing, do y'all all believe that those things are spiritual?
Yes.
We all believe it. But we're moving, in this study, we're moving from believing to behaving. That's where the rubber meets rubber, that's why the processes and procedures are necessary. Okay, I need to use this book, and this is our process and procedure manual. Let me use this book to figure out how I'm going to minimize the risk in my life. How I'm going to get some internal control operation, how I'm going to have operational success. It's listed right here. Five minutes. Six pages. Read and speak scripture. One of the ways that I do this is through what y'all know is my index card system. I keep scriptures that the Lord brings, I have tons of these by this point. I just put them in an index card. I've appetized them, so that this one is about attitude, the A's, the B is about behavior. Y'all know a lot of this, you know better. And so I just list it, and a few times a week, I'll try to switch them out and put them in my car, and I'll put them where I do my makeup, put them on my refrigerator. This is what I speak. I try to send a reminder to Siri to remind me of the scripture that day, but she'll speak it back to me, if she'll do it right. Speak the scripture back to me. And speak it to one another. And listen, we've given the perfect setup today. For you to, when somebody begins a conversation with you today, for you to say, "Can I just tell you what I read today?" It's not weird, but people will think you're weird. Here's what the devil's like, "You can't say the word, thank you." So the little people that hang around you, they act like that. It's kind of this general conversation, whatever they're saying, just say it. "Can I share with you what I read today?" I jotted it down so I could try to memorize it and not forget it, so that I could not only believe it, but I could behave it. So as we use just scripture, find whatever method works for you, but this is a pattern. This is a behavior. This is a process and procedure that we're going to be putting into our life, so that we can take things back and we can live and think right and live victorious. Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Girls online, thank you for joining us today. We look forward to your comments in the section.